Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to put the prize and say the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Present.
Commissioner Rexroth.
Present.
Chairman Wesel.
Here.
Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Here.
Commissioner Lautner. Everyone, please make sure yours is the proposed agenda.
Not current.
Thank you. We do have a proposed agenda, and I'd like to suggest that we move item 2D to the top of the list out of respect for our two visitors from Sutton's Bay. I would move to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
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 Motion approved. We have an agenda. This time, we have public comment. If anybody in the audience would like to make public comments. Alice Bailey, Village of Sutton's Bay.
I hear about the Sutton's Bay TIF request. At the last meeting, I heard your concerns about what if there were a community with creative downtown development authority across TIF funds. There's only three incorporated villages in the county, so it's not, I don't think that easy for a township to do it. Time-consuming process to lose trade. So I would encourage you to think kindly about your community in Sutton's Bay that's requesting not a lot of dollars, but it would be a good way for the county to indicate some line to infrastructure improvements in the villages. So, Sutton's Bay mill, they want that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. Any commissioner comment? Okay. We now will go to our agenda. Mr. Lewis, are you going to introduce the Sutton's Bay TIF request?
I can. It's first press before we have Rob in Rob, not with us. You've heard their presentation, I think, a couple of weeks back as to their request. I think it's, you need to make the decision so we can finalize the budget for you, whether you want to honor this request or you have other questions you may want to ask. So, we're leaning your direction of how you would like to proceed. So, okay. And, is there any answer any more questions you may have?
Would you like to come to the table?
Just don't mess up my little mind. I hope we're gonna mess up a little bit. Unless there's a copy.
Would you like to kick it off with making any comments?
Yeah, just, I had Rob, I have the other favor for Sutton's Bay. We put together a DDA a few years back, we passed it in 2018, kind of starting to do different tax capture. We, the DDA is comprised of about 72, I think, of those commercial businesses. So, we're starting to make our way as far as tax capture. And, as I understand it, a few years ago when this was originally passed, we were going to pass that how they opted not to participate in the tax capture. That was a few years back. We feel like we're ahead in good direction right now. We're kind of like a destination now. We've become a destination of bringing a lot of tourism, a lot of interest to our community. And because, you know, we're at the beginning of the, of the major, so we feel like that's also bringing a lot of interest into the county as a whole, and we're in a just the village. And this request before you, it's this time of, it's five years. I think we've had a kind of strong partnership in that five years. We're trying to, you know, to test that. There's a lot of, a lot of different things we could put in the agreement to, to address concerns. But really with that, that's, we're hoping that you guys can partner with the village.
Yeah, as Rob said, you know, if there, you did bring up some concerns at the last meeting, and there are, there are options on how to address concerns such as, you know, point about, if the concern is that there's too much growth, we could talk about limiting that growth. So, there are a lot of ways to, to address, to, 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 to talk about that.
So, I need a little bit of a recap again. What would this cost the taxpayers to invest in Sutton's Bay? Or this investment in Sutton's Bay?
It would not cost, yeah, it would not cost the taxpayers anything because it's really just redirecting tax number.
Okay, but it redirects it all to you?
One hundred, their estimates are over the next, over five years, to be a total of 161,000, around, about 161,800 dollars. The first year, which would be, it's about 27,000. Second year goes to 2600. Then it goes to 32,300. Then it goes to 35,000. And the last year is about 38,000. And that's assuming an annual growth rate of, what's, you have two percent?
Three.
Three percent. That may be a little aggressive, but it's five years. And that is, and that's just calculating on inflationary growth, correct?
Right.
They're not talking about any change of properties, any new development, or whatever. So, if you want to do-
Or uncappings.
Uncappings, yes.
The uncapping, or new work, or-
And three percent, I don't think three percent's aggressive. I think three percent's very low. I think they're conservative. So, that-
That's conservative. I would be, but that's a different topic.
So, to finish my state, my question, then we can anticipate more taxes, tax growth, after you have invested. So, there'll be more things. So, I think we have to keep that in mind. It's an investment in future growth. So, we will probably re, the people will probably recap.
But same, as you mentioned, that if that's an, if that's something you want to consider, then, you know, you could put a limit on it, that what they're asking for is 100, I'm gonna just round it up, 162,000 dollars. That's what you need from the county. You can say, we'll do it for five years, or until X, 162,000 dollars is reached, whichever comes first.
I mean, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Lautner. I mean, 100, I think we're going a lot more than 162, because if there are cappings in between, or the rate of increase is higher than three percent, then that number could be 200 or 215,000.
But I would, I would limit it to X. And if that's how you want to, I think that's what you said you'd be open to. What you're needing from the county, if I, if you're right, is a minimum of 162, or the maximum of 162. So, you could say, yes, we'll do the five years, or 162,000, whichever comes first. So, if they reach it in four years, there isn't a bit of your cap. But after five years, if they've only got to, to say 150,000, that's it. That's it. I just, you know, so that's the way, that's the way I'm hearing it.
Commissioner Lautner?
I guess my thought is, I've been giving the budget a lot of thought in the last week. And, and I have some questions about the whole budget process. Not just the process, but exactly where we are. I thought perhaps we, we are gonna move forward with the cooling tower, is, are we-
Well, we were gonna get in there, but that's gonna come out of the CR.
We can talk about-
Right. But here, there's a whole lot of things coming out of a whole lot of budgets, is my thought. And we are overspending at a rate we can't afford to keep doing. We've got a long way to go with this budget. I, I just honestly don't think we should be getting involved in, in excusing taxes at this, at this point. I think we had a very good reason for saying, thank you, but no, a few years ago, and I think that we need to do that again. I think Sutton's Bay is going to be just fine. You're doing some great things. I think you'll get them done, I really do. But to, to set aside county taxes is just not a really good time for us right now.
We, we are gonna be looking at all of our priorities under 2E, and we aren't gonna be making a decision on this today, where this is an information gathering thing, this is a committee meeting, not a special meeting.
Well, I think that by consensus, I think we need to say yes or no, so we can move on, because this is second time now we're, I don't think we should just keep bringing this back.
But I don't think we can do, I don't think we can do that, Melinda, in isolation from item 2E either. I think we need to look at all of the package, to make sure we all have our priorities straight.
Okay, but these are recommendations. So, if we ever look at it under E, that's fine. But I just think we need to cut a cord.
If the board's comfortable, I think, while they're here, we get any information we need, and then we, we look at all of our expenditure under 2E. Comfortable with that, don't?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have some of the same misgivings as Commissioner Lautner. I mean, it appears we're gonna be, you know, taking out of our fund balance to balance this budget this year, no matter what we do, from what I've seen in the numbers, so, but it's better to talk about it than, I, I don't care, that's fine. I don't have any further questions, so.
Commissioner Ross, question?
Again, the, there were three projects, right? Could you just say them out loud enough for me? The walkway, the bridge, the bathroom-
Restaurant.
We have the pedestrian, the pedestrian bridge, which is going to be an educational bridge that has not any curators, I, and part of, you know, the town education, we're creating two of our parks, and a pavilion in the park to continue that same stuff.
So, all four, all three of those projects. I think it'll be a wonderful addition to Sutton's Bay, and, yeah, we'll see how we can help you.
Where's the pedestrian bridge could be?
There used to be a bridge that connected to the marina with the St. Black Park. It stretched over the wetland area there, and the high water, took it out. High water, so we're looking at, like I said, it's part of the educational bridge. So, we don't have the bird sanctuary here, we got the bay, never pulled out, we haven't seen, so, our monitoring plan is, is to, is to, and I'll add, and I'll create this situation, and that's part of, while you're standing on the bridge, you can read about history and everything associated with it.
Without the TIF from the county, will the projects proceed anyway?
We'll see.
Because my question, the reason I asked that question is, if, if you don't complete projects, we're not losing money because we wouldn't have collected taxes on those properties if they weren't developed.
Yeah, I, I can't say for sure a timeline and how they're gonna move forward. We are working on the restroom thing currently. There's other things, like the marina pedestrian bridge, we did a slide for a grant for that, it'll be a partial grant. We haven't heard back on that one yet, so. Will they move forward? Probably, yeah. But that's the goal, is to continue to improve our community. And that, because we could improve our community of the, the visitors continue, it's good for the county as a whole. So, we continue regardless of the factors.
Has any of the other potential participants, has any of their positions changed? Because you, you still hadn't gone to the, I thought the village of Sutton's Bay itself, the township. Has anything changed there?
No, we haven't heard anybody. I would feel, as our county leaders, and we're looking for your support to continue on it. We don't have your support to continue on, so, go on.
Kathy?
Can I just say, is, these projects, is it improving municipal property or improving private property?
Yeah. Yeah, the same concern I have that I was gonna, yeah.
This is not generating revenue at all. This is municipal tax, free, tax-exempt property, so they're improving municipal properties, private, so it doesn't generate more tax revenue.
That's what my question was gonna be.
And I can see the look on your face like that. I don't think you're understanding what we're improving here. So, there is no increase in taxable value on these properties. You're improving because they're already tax exempt. What it is, is the surrounding private property, commercial property, maybe they'll have an increase in value because of the enhancement to the village. I can't predict that.
That is the theory.
Yeah, it also brings that kind of-
Thank you, Kathy.
Capitalist. When you bring all these, all these people and everything to your community, it helps them.
Commissioner Ross?
Just a flat-out no. I, I just think that we're, Commissioner Lautner's point, Sutton's Bay is a beautiful place. I think they probably have enough income coming in, and I think they're a lot better financially than we are right now, so.
The marinas.
I'm, I'm against it.
The marinas gotta be bringing in a boatload of money, because I know Elmwood, Elmwood brings in a boatload of money under Marina.
No, no, no pun intended there, Commissioner Lautner.
A boatload. I know, actually not. I think that's forever available. I'm gonna catch it.
Any other questions for Rob? Okay, then we will, we will be talking about this when we get down to talking about all of our expenses at the end of our meeting today. We will not take action at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you ready?
I would move that the Lillona County Board of Commissioners go into closed session to discuss collective bargaining as permitted by MCL 15 dot 268 sub 1 sub C.
Specify who goes.
I'll let the finance director, human resources manager, and your interim county administrator participate.
So stipulated.
Do you want to put that in there? And did anyone second that before?
I was, I was, yeah.
Roll call, please.
A second, let me get this amended.
Also, do we have the knowledge on legal counsel, too?
Yes, manager.
He's a reasonable gentleman. Okay, that was Rexroth and Ms. Ross. Okay, Commissioner Rexroth.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman Wesel.
Yes.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Commissioner Lautner.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Rourke.
Yes.
Six to zero.
We will, we will be back, I suspect, we'll be with our three for 20 minutes.
Thank you. I just want to-
Support.
All those in support of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Now, let's take a 10-minute break.
Is this mine, or this yours? That's yours.
I think we'll start, and when can come, she's talking to the sheriff. Thank you.
Yeah, agreed.
As, as normal, our 10 minutes went to 20, but thanks for coming back. We, we should, before we go to our agenda, set some parameters for how long our meeting is. And I suggest we aim for 1 o'clock, and see if we can get through our agenda by 1 o'clock. And if we can't, we'll then, at that point, make a decision whether we need to continue or to have a special meeting next week. Okay?
Fair.
So, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. First of all, we're gonna, we're gonna continue to follow up on a number of topics that you have requested, and I'll have some more handouts. Kathy handed out to you three update sheets. There's more that can be out there, but, you know, they're minor compared to this, so Kathy, just explain what you're paying the county for.
Can we sound the agenda, maybe?
Oh, you wanna do it that way?
Does that kind of turn my brain, the whole agenda?
I think so.
My brain just messed up the whole system. Vehicle charges. You were something, you were working on vehicle charges?
Correct. I did, you did approve a budget amendment at the previous meeting, to amend the 24 budget for the increase in the mileage charges. I did push those numbers into the 2025 proposed, so it did increase this budget by, I believe it's about 200,000 dollars.
And those will all be under rental.
Rental. Now, when we give you the green sheets for your books, you'll have all the permits with the updates, but I just want to let you know, I did plow that into the 25 proposed, so that's-
At what, at what number?
It was about 220,000 more.
I mean, what, what, 35 cents, what?
It's 30 and 50. 50 cents for almost under 80,000. And, okay. And then over. So, that was significant, but that will help us to afford the replacement in the motor pool as the vehicles that we purchased are, it's been actually more expensive. So, that did, that did happen. Then, item B, senior services, we did meet with, oh, that's something different.
Yeah.
Never mind. I, but, I guess, my stuff is even on here, so. What I did give you is a new senior services budget. It's six pages. We have the, 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 and she approved this amendment to be more in line with her actual revenue, with a small adjustment to fund balance. So, she feels comfortable with this. I think that's a good exercise for us to go through. So, this is gonna replace senior services. It's on, they have their own revenue stream, no impact on the general fund. So, that, you'll slip into your fund section of the book. And then, because of the adjustments that were made to the 25 proposed, that did impact the general fund. I did mention that we have the vehicle adjustment. We were notified of a, what we call a life event, which is a nice thing for one of our 24/7 who had a baby to their household, so that changed the insurance component, so I made that change.
Which, which, just for everyone's benefit, can you tell them what's in the green sheet you're discussing? We set aside the senior citizens now, so, just to make sure everyone's on-
Yeah, I have one of the 27, the group that's one of the-
General, general fund.
Yeah.
Okay, right. I just, I'm sure I was looking at the-
I don't see one.
I just highlighted the budgets that were touched since you've been sitting and talking about it.
And that's the yellow highlighted items in that thing. Okay.
So, it's mostly because of the vehicle charges, or expenditures, that we made those corrections.
And that biggest adjustment looks like it's the sheriffs, because they have the biggest vehicle use, that's why that jumped so much.
And, and they always have three new patrol cars, at least, that are more expensive. So, going to page two of three, I did adjust the treasury's budget and the register of fees budget to reflect the 10.67% increase you gave your chief marketees. At the base, on the bottom of page two, we did touch parks and rec. And that was to load the, a little bit of mileage in there, because they're a fleet of vehicles, and to also pick up the mower. You agreed to look at a mower for the 120, 25, 35.
To back up, why, why is, what's our bigger increases than a one went up, one went down? I don't understand that. Which, which are you talking about?
Two of three. You said the treasury's, total, you said you changed that because of what we did.
Was it that big of an increase, or is there just, there's a shop in there?
Well, it would be, it would be the wages, the fight, the murders.
Through the all of the employees.
Okay.
That's 100, yeah. That's full of every one of those.
Loaded, I guess that would say.
Loaded.
At the bottom of page two is parks and rec, and so the increase in that budget was the mower, that you agreed to pick up the capitalist and buy, and a little bit of mileage, and some uniforms. Also, the hour that increased for the seasonal, you wanted two weeks or three weeks more of the seasonal people, so that's in there. And then, the contingency fund, at the bottom of the page, this is the big adjustment. And what we have talked about is looking at 2025 as the year we will achieve the cooling tower, the air handler, and the console renovation across the street, but we don't have projects yet. We just know it's coming. This will get things set up, saying we want to put that money aside. And John and I spoke about how to fund that, rather than using the fund balance to fund that contingency, we've got to transfer in from the DTR for 600,000 dollars. 575. They're already gonna put 25,000 in, or they have always done that, from the DTR to the general fund. But this way, you will put more pressure on your fund balance. I think the last time we talked, you're pushing 1.3, 1.4 million to take care of the air handler, the cooling tower, and still have a contingency of 300,000. So, in talking with John, let's, let's get that money built in here, so you have a realistic view of what your impact on fund balance would be before your wage increases, but not have fund balance cut across the air handler, the cooling tower, and the console renovation across the street, which is also a 2% grant request. But you can't hope the revenue you don't know you're gonna get. So, you know they need to have it done, and that's what we're recommending.
And didn't we, haven't we always just assumed that when we do the cooling tower out of DTR?
We have, we-
I mean, we've talked about that.
I think the well is that the heat pump replacements are going to come from DTR. So, that's still continuing, because that's over time. This, we came into 24, agreeing to potential to replace 10 heat pumps. We did move that money from DTR to 470, and we replaced a good number of them. I think we have two, two or three more that we could do, that money's ready, it's already there. But remembering two, and John and I talked about this, that now you have committed surplus money that John has identified, we've talked about it, you're gonna finish your point broadband contract with DTR, that's 950,000. You're going to replace heat pumps as needed over time, and you're free to, around 750,000. Now, if you're going to agree to this proposal for a transfer in from DTR, and achieve the cooling tower, the console, and the air handler, hoping it's around 575, it's in here from DTR. That's the 600,000 on page seven of Sutton's Bay.
Again, part of the process is, is that we'll be sharing that RF for engineering services for those, you know, the power and the other stuff, prepare, hire a firm, engineering company to prepare, and RF to hire someone to, to go through it all, make sure we're getting what we think, what we know we need for, for the future, and then prepare that. To be honest with you, that, to put it together, but that, like she was mentioning, we're preparing this for the next mission. Say, here's what our recommendation is to you as force gets past. And that's, it will be brought to them at their first meeting in January, we'll, we'll give the explanation, here's what we're hoping to accomplish, and see if they will, if you can move forward with that.
Well, we can actually get Darren to yell.
I'm not gonna promise that. I would not promise that.
Well, we do know we need the cooling tower.
Yeah, we know we need it. So- So, but the other part of this is, I can say yes, but you cannot commit the next commission. This commission cannot commit the next commission. And I'm trying to be conscious of that for everybody.
Okay, but to back up, we have to do the cooling tower. So we can.
You don't have to do anything.
Okay.
You can go, there's bad consequences.
If we want bigger than country, if you want air conditioning next summer.
Yes, correct.
We need to do the cooling tower. So why not start the RFP process and get moving?
Because he's. I'm trying to do it, but can I have it all done by, by your December meeting? I'm not going to promise.
Well, I don't think it has to be done by. You will start the process.
Oh, I'm starting the process. I'm just saying, I'm starting the process. I'm not waiting until January to get an RFP prepared. I'm not going to wait until January to send out an RFP. I'm just saying to award the RFP.
Well, you could send it out, you'll send it out.
I'll send it out.
Okay.
And to have it back into our hands by the end of December or the very first of January.
I might be pushing it, but I mean, it could be, right?
So that next commission, no, no, if that's what you're wondering, no, I'm not waiting for January to start the RFP. To hire an engineering firm. I want to start that within the next two or three weeks. And I have a meeting with a, another engineering firm, the engineer of Traverse City. The hell do I prepare that RFP to get that engineering aspect of it? Because it's one thing to put together an RFP and say, I want to buy three parts. I want to make sure I get the RFP right to say, I need consulting work. I want to make sure I get that white, you know? And they have prepared more RFPs than I'll ever think about. So they've agreed to help me work on that. And at the end is our RFP, so that's, I've got that set up and ready to start working. Now, if I got that confused, no, I want to get it out there and get firms to respond to it. And we can make a recommendation to the next commission, say, here's the game plan, here's what our plan is.
Okay, so this is where, this is where I want to make sure I don't lose you. So you can start that process. If you're ready to make a recommendation, you can make that recommendation to this board.
I could, but that doesn't mean the next body's going to do.
Can't turn it around.
They may stop.
Well, they would be absolutely foolish to do that, but, but.
That's what they have to be foolish.
Okay, they can change everything. We don't just stop working because it's.
I'm not stopping work.
Okay, but you're, what I'm saying is if you've got that in, let's just keep moving forward. I mean, there's no reason that this board can't make a recommendation, especially on something as important as.
You and I will have philosophical differences on that idea.
It's just going to make it easier, right? It's just going to make it easier.
I can't tell you what the next commission's going to do. If you can give me that, you've got, I understand, Melinda, I've gone through years of transitioning of commissions.
I understand, yes, so have I, and so have I.
And I'm trying to be respectful of what's coming.
Well, and so am I.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to do.
So this is such a pivotal thing for this building, for the health of our employees.
Well, this has been a pivotal thing for this building for years, from what I understand. So, I mean, what's waiting a couple more weeks?
We do have a lot of work to do.
We have a lot of work to do. I, I, I just don't see why this board can't continue to work instead of just dumping everything off.
Well, I think he's saying he's moving forward.
I'm moving forward.
And I'm saying that if, if we can continue to move forward, bring it, bring it. Don't just hold up because it's going to change.
It's my respect for the next commission. Because I also have learned, this commission cannot commit the next commission.
For anything, other than contracts. So, so are we just going to? I'm not going to argue with you.
And I'm not arguing with you. We have.
Well, why are you?
Commissioner Rush?
We are discussing.
We're discussing.
We have two different philosophical ideas.
Let's, let's move forward. Commissioner Rush?
I just, I guess this level of taking from the DTR, is that, is this unprecedented? Or is this something that we have done in the past?
Well, in talking with John yesterday, he identifies what is available for surplus monies. That means he makes sure he retains what he needs to do to make his settlements and whatnot. John, you'll correct me if I misspeak, please jump in. And that is that this is identified as surplus. Now, he does, we are very conscious of cash flow as well. So we have been talking about this. This just makes sense. Because this is capital. It does fall under those guidelines, and we felt that this made more sense.
Great, thank you.
Rather than relying on fund balance. Because fund balance is your operational cash flow to pay your bills, meet your payroll, the things that just keep going here. And we can also time these things, you know, but it's, it's something that we have to discuss. I would continue to do this year, year, year to these big ticket items. There's, there will be a part of my work down since I don't have surplus.
Interesting.
I, for history's sake, about the air handler, in 2015, I think that there might have been a survey done on the handler to see, or the cooling, the cooling tower, excuse me, the cooling tower. And John, you mentioned that there were schematics or engineering drawings about how it was built. And it was done by Apollo. Does anyone recall?
Yep.
Who has backstory that can just help us with that?
What, what do you mean?
Apollo did a whole study on that. And that, weren't we decided to go with the chilled beam system instead? So we had put a stop to the heat pump idea because we're buying parts on eBay. So we thought we were going to go with a whole different and new system.
And Apollo did the registers around the building, the base registers. Is that what you did, John?
Yeah, but that was in like 2020. That was in 2015.
Okay, I was just, I was just curious. Because if there's drawings already made, I'd love to see where we will find any drawings. There are drawings.
And that'd be part of the review.
Yeah, we'll find those for sure. If that, you're right, if that work has been done.
And that's part of the evaluation.
Okay, we're down to two B, Richard?
You had asked us to give consideration to the paid senior services director, and I'm not dealing with individuals, I'm dealing with positions. I cannot give you a recommendation. Because it starts to open, and in the last two weeks, I did enough little side comments and say, well, this is one, then why not the other ones? And as I look through this, I mean, there's a lot of questions in here that I could ask, and I don't have the total expertise. And now I'm starting to guess. And I put in the yellow one, which is what the question was, and then I put in, then in blue. What about the rest of these? What about the rest of these? How do I take one position and not look at all positions and say, aye, it's the broad aye, you know, we do that? And of course, you have something in front of you that, I didn't even touch the four components, but you have a, something on your. You have something on your table from Cameron of doing other things to make some adjustments toward the fourth administrator and the substance abuse book coordinator. So I can't give you recommendations at this point. Not unless we start going through a much more detailed analysis of what's happening in other counties at this point. The three recommendations that we came up with since I've been here, one, with the removing of the freezing of the salary, of the range of the IT director, which was something that needed to be done. Created a new position of a finance director, which we recognized where that salary range should be. Then, of course, I felt like I was directed to come up with something as related to the deputy register of deeds and the deputy, chief deputy of clerk, because of action that had been taken some time back regarding the chief deputy clerk. So those have got a range. I can't do any more for you right now. I can't give you any more. You can make whatever decisions you want, but I cannot give you a recommendation. I'm just telling you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oga?
So I hear you. What we've needed for a very, very long time is a wage study. We've decided not to do it because it's expensive. I still don't understand why the starting salary for a senior services director who has a lot of responsibility, has a lot of contracted services under her in addition to the three or four employees in her office, does not make as a starting salary the same as other department heads as a starting salary. I don't know how that can possibly be justified. So I would just suggest that that starting salary be adjusted. Do I think that, I'm glad we have a human resources director. We've needed that. That position has no one reporting to them other than everybody in this building. But they have no direct reports. And the senior service director who does and runs a department has the same starting salary. I don't know how we justify that. So I believe it would be fair that the starting salary for the senior services director be the same as other department heads. She makes less than a deputy clerk. So the IT director starts at 74. At this point, she has no direct reports.
I'm sorry, finance director?
I said the IT director.
Oh, sorry.
I know the finance director does. I'm talking about the IT director. The planning director makes more. She has direct reports. I just don't understand. So I, I guess what, since we don't have time and we've chosen not to do a wage study, I think that her starting salary should be commensurate with other department heads. And I see 74, 197, 31 for the planning director, the finance director's starting salary for the IT director. And she's a senior services director. I don't understand why she would make, that position would take $6,000 less.
Are we, are we formal yet or just to recognize we're still in informal format?
Yes.
I appreciate you coming back with our recommendation. I, I originally okayed having you investigate and then recredited it afterward just because as I've watched this in my couple of years here, when we fore-end of this, we might as well be the HR department. We're going to have an unending parade of people making their cases to us individually and us as groups. I just don't think this is our position to do it. And so I, I, I just wish we would stay out of this business. Let the administrator do his job, bring to us the business of the county, what needs to be brought, things that should work through its normal administrative process. And then we react to it. So I, I, that's just where I'm at. So I, I supported no recommendation. That's, I, I just wish we, I'm not going to be here the next term, but I wish that the next, if I give any advice is, don't, don't become the HR department as the county commission.
Can I just add, we've been talking about this for three or four years. And we've acted on others, but we've never acted on this one.
I don't think we've acted on any that have, have the board without administrator recommendation. And, and I think that's, that's the difference here. And, and I do believe that, that we asked, we asked the administrator to come up with a, with a salary. He said he can't do it for a lot of reasons. We don't have a recommendation to act on. And I don't think, if this, I, I agree with Doug. I don't think this board wants to set the salaries of individual staff. We started doing that with the prosecutor's office some time ago, and we've, we've had several people up here since then that we've had to adjust. And, and we've now got a, we've got a human resources manager. Maybe she will come back to us at a later date after she entered seat and say, here's some adjustments I think we ought to make. Or maybe Richard will. I, I will not, I will personally not support a move on this board to approve and enter the real salary.
Now, that, that should be through HR anyway. So I mean, over the next year, she could look at everything, look at different counties, look at different responsibilities. That would be a good thing for her or him to do.
I think it would be a good faith effort to ask both Kathy and Richard to do this, and they'd come back and say.
It's not my job. This is not Kathy. This is Richard Lewis. Okay, I kept Kathy out of it because as I go through this listing here, are these fair? This is, this is a fair, I have no idea, I have no idea, and I haven't had time to go into it, of the basis of how the senior services director's wage was established. Was it done by comparing to other counties? Was it compared to, I don't know. I have no clue. So then I start looking down through that. What's the difference between that one and the assistant director of 911? That person's got eight people. Such a case, as I say, that whole system's got, you know, the issues of, you know, someone's got an emergency, someone's got to be dealt with. I can't, I cannot give you good justification of why you should or why you shouldn't.
Well, then I would like to formally ask the HR director to address this. Because we've been talking about it for years, and it's blatantly unfair. When was the last time this was taken up by an, an administrator or anything?
Well, I do.
I think that's a fair thing to ask then, that we make.
Are you wanting to go back and do, if you're going to do this, we're going to have to do, this is going to have to become more professional than just, than just looking at that bunch of numbers.
Right.
I just think it's.
You can't cherry pick.
Blackly unfair among our other department heads.
I did notice the court administrator is, is significantly less than a senior services director in their starting wage.
I'm sorry, what?
Court administrator, they're, they're a department head. Commissioner Lutner?
I just want to, I just want to kind of make sure that we, we don't micromanage. As Commissioner Rasko just said, we shouldn't be micromanaging, micromanaging these wages from these seats. So I don't think we should have one commissioner saying that, you know, that we, to formally request it just be looked at. It needs to come from the whole board. And I think the decision to, to not act on these right now is the very best decision. A full wage study, a full wage study is fine if everybody wants to take all the recommendations out of their wage study so that nobody can complain and, and move forward. So all the employees are going to have to take whether their wages are frozen for five years or whether they get a raise that's going to bring them up by 5,000. All the employees would have to know that that is what we're going to do if we do, we being this board, does a wage study in the future. So, I mean, this thing could be absolutely picked apart. I look at, I look at, the executive assistant tops out at 62,000, and look at the responsibility with just that position. Look at some of these wages, and now they're coming in under our elected officials that are only at 83,000, except for two of our elected officials that are a whole lot higher. So we want to look at things owners, what we will be looking at. There's some great disparities, disparities in there. I don't know, how many contracts does our treasurer manage? Any idea? 12, 25, 85? This is.
But see, in agreement, this shows the futility of trying to do this here. This is just why you don't do it here. This is, this discussion will go on for seven hours and not come to a resolution.
So that's why I asked the HR director to do it.
No, you can't ask the HR director.
I know, but I, that, yes. I love to word out that the HR director do it.
Yeah.
I tell you what, you can vote on it. It'll be on your November agenda. You vote it, direct it, it'll be direct. Otherwise, I'm not touching it until your next administrator.
My assumption is that the administrator and the human resources manager, if they see inequities, they would come to make recommendations to the board. That's a part of the human resources responsibilities, part of administrative responsibility. I, I agree, we don't want to. I, I agree, we don't want to micromanage an individual salary. So I, I don't think it has to be on the November meeting to vote on. Unless, unless I'm wrong, I've heard Commissioner-
I get, I put it another way. I get a written request to put this on the November agenda of any one of you, it will be on, on the, it'll be on, it'll be on, on the calendar.
Which is normal, normal procedure anyway, I assume, right? So then-
I told you many times, I would not do that. I can't do this one. It's not within my, it's not within my ability to do it.
Most counties don't have an annual or a, every three-year review?
They may have, but I just know that the only county that I've ever watched was Grand Trepas County, and it always comes out a mess. People are happy and they're not happy, no matter anything.
But you still need to look at making sure it's fair.
I agree with that. And you do it by comparisons to other counties. But, you know, what's that, I, we cannot compare ourselves to Grand Trepas County. So you got to find other counties that are in the same dynamic, population side, whatever parameters you use by it, that's what happens, how you look at it. Some may be higher, some may be lower. It's the same thing that happens when you go through arbitration with your unions. You try to pick, you try to pick counties that are in the same comparables that you're going to get it. And that may be one way to do it. What are those counties that are used when we have to go to arbitration? You bet knows, what are they doing there? That may be the best one. I don't know.
Right.
Okay.
You can't read them.
If I could just interject, people are given an offer letter with a wage. They accept it. They know what they're getting into. They've seen the job description. They've accepted it.
I was just going to say, we haven't had any trouble finding a position.
Let's move on to item 2C.
Okay.
Good job.
You back up here. You cause, you have something on the desk we're talking about wages. You have a proposed wage increase. Who knows? I did not touch Cameron's here, but this is going to be to hear it out from the, what their request is and how you want to deal with that. So this is something we haven't touched. I don't know anywhere else I'm going to do this, but I would respect you out of here when they try to say you give us.
Just a, just a question for the board and for you before we do that. Don't we typically hold off on salary of non-union staff until after negotiations?
Well, that's something we've talked about. That's next on the agenda. Typically, we do it, but this is not a typical year.
I want to go back to being a elementary school teacher.
And I'm like, oh, now I'd be retarded.
I said, help, Mr. Wizard, isn't that the old cartoon?
Good morning. Uh, you want me to come in? Okay. So we've been talking, we, the board and I and the judge have been talking for months now, since I began the child care fund budget process back in April, we've been discussing on-call pay for the four paid workers. There seemed to be agreement even way back down there. And I did some surveys of other counties that approximately $150 a week was a reasonable amount of money to pay people for being on-call. Their lives are on hold and on-call all the time. The board seemed okay with that number, but the board did not like turns like, you know, go down that route. So after some discussions with Kathy and with Richard, this, this ask now with that, those dollars just be put into their salary, making salary important, making, you know, cut through all the pad tape and just put it in there at $150 a week through a salary Manci County does it that way. Benzey County does it that way. Other counties do it this way. It's not, not reinventing anything, stranger. It's just-
So in order to accommodate that, their current wages are, are 35. Students make, to go up to the 150, they are on-call, and they also have additional responsibilities of doing testing and screening that is now mandated by law. But we're asking that they're all of the, other words, suggesting the salary is $39 an hour, which would take into account $150 a week for their extra responsibilities.
When you presented, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lautner, then, was it you?
I think Quinn.
Then Quinn.
I'm just going to, I'm just going to cut, cut to the chase. I think this falls right in line with what we have been talking about. I think these wages are good. I think these wages, when our employees applying to these positions knew what the, what the position was. And I, I have to go back to what we just heard from, from our judge with Grand Trepas County. And, you know, those, those employees there are dealing with the very same situations, but with tremendous caseloads compared to Leona County. So I think that that has to be taken into consideration with these. These are, these are very, these are very good wages and benefit packages that we offer here. And I look at a lot of our employees. I look at a lot of our employees in the county, and many of them fall under the same aspect of having to work outside of the regular hours. They're either taking calls or, you know, I've been in a line of our, our maintenance director, the wage didn't change for years, but yet that maintenance director was constantly on-call here at the facilities for any little thing that went wrong any time of the day or night, and never asked for extra pay. And it, and it happened a lot. So I, I just, I think we're, I think we're really good where we're at. I honestly do, considering the workload especially.
Commissioner O'Gorman?
You know, my, so I need to be reminded why the 150 wasn't going to work because the problem with wrapping it into the salary is in 10 years, that won't feel like people are getting extra pay for having to be on-call all the time. That will go, that awareness will kind of go away. And I would predict that people would say, well, gosh, we're working, we're really on-call all the time, shouldn't we get? So the 1, why did we, why did we nix the 150? Because that tells them they're getting credit for being on-call all the time.
It was garbage. The words by Ben was, not a talent.
I think we had to put another term for it, but 150 wasn't being talked about, but it was the, the label. And then, I said, we'll go back and talk about it. And so in order to put that 150 in there, we came up with $300 an hour. And with regard to other employees who are on, doing 24/7, not all of our employees are, but those who are, I would suggest they need to speak up. But in addition, our four paid workers, since October of this year, when the new laws went into effect, they have to go through additional training to do mental health assessments, retention assessments, disposition assessments, and file written reports. So there, there's a whole other level of responsibilities that weren't there last, last year. And in 10 years from now, yeah, in 10 years from now, hopefully everyone will be making more money.
So to sum up what I said, I would be in favor of the 150, but not wrapping it into one. And as far as all the extra training, a lot of us have to do that. When I was a therapist, I had to do all kinds of extra stuff, and I was never paid for it. Well, you were paying it as a stipend, right?
No, we never got it pretty much.
Oh, well, then let's, I'd like to figure that out. So that it remains apparent they're getting something for being on-call.
Did encourage them to move forward if they worked more than the first seven and a half hours, to put it down on the pay sheets. If they had to work 45 hours that week to take care of the state since October 1st, I may go over there. Well, put it on your timesheets, we're paying, we're going to pay. If you have to work 45 hour a week, you get it. No questions. That's what we've been doing since the start.
So what are you finding?
How would you do that?
Huh?
How would you do that? Because you're on-call, but you may not get a call.
But then you don't get paid.
Well, they, they were documenting when they did something after hours, before hours and after hours. But I know that at least, at least one, probably one of our employees is very conservative as to when they're going to go out. I, I don't know what the, why is it, oh, my hours done is not, whatever. I told them, whatever you do after hours, put it on your timesheet.
Sure.
And that's the clearest way.
So Kathy, how, how many hours were turned in based on that?
Well, I didn't come here to tell you that, but they are, some of their version customers are putting their hours on your timesheet, and it could be a Saturday or Sunday. I didn't, I don't each know what, but five to seven, worked, we're paying. If you work in your hourly, you're paying.
But it doesn't count like camping trips and volleyball games and that.
And it's kind of the, the guys group or the, or the voices and choices. They're, they're working, they're having fun, they're working with the youth.
If they're working, they get paid.
So I think, remember some of this discussion, I mean, that was part of the, so they're classified as hourly employees right now. They're not salaried. So my concern, and I, there's a little bit of blood in the line, I know. I mean, if they're, if they work overtime, they need to get paid for it. So if you roll this a salary in, there's nothing to stop a claim four years from now, well, I actually worked all these extra hours and did not get paid for overtime.
Right.
All you're doing is changing an hourly thing. So I, I think the report and pay actually complies with Michigan labor law, although I'm not an expert in it, the, your HR person is, but I, yeah, I, I think that, that's just pay if you get called out, pay for it. I mean, I mean, the other option would be to change it to a salaried position, and you're just working the hours you work. But I don't want to get in the middle of that because I don't want to be, I, I want to do what we're, I just said we shouldn't do. So I, I, I think if you have a, if the administrator's put in a policy that says you get paid, and you write it down, and then if you do the work, you get paid, then I think this is taken care of in my mind.
The law covers that right now.
Right, right.
It's all of the law.
That, I guess that's, I guess, if you want to wrap up everything I said a minute ago with just that, that, and that's, that's, that's-
Now, if you want to make it a salary, and that's what they're requesting, that's your call to me. Right now, we're making sure, going into this, that you made your decision whether should we make salary and just make sure they log it, encourage them to log their hours, and they will be compensated for those hours as required by law. Or if you just want to change it to a salaried position, is what they are requesting, that now, that's your call to me.
Well, if they log the hours, then we have information to look at six months from now, and then a more informed decision can be made. I mean, that seems to make sense to me. The next board would have some history, okay, well, they've been logging this much time, and this maybe doesn't make sense to do it this way.
Well, we have two employees that are already salaried, so that's, that, they're locked in a salary. We shouldn't even be considering anything different than, than that. The other employees currently $25 an hour, $29 an hour, $35 an hour.
I think the judge and Kim are discussing the substance abuse information officers. The version, I think you're only addressing the four.
You're not addressing the two in the board.
So we're just, if you're, but-
I would sure encourage them.
I, for, for, for my position, I think if we pay people by, for the time they work, then we don't need to talk about a, an hourly increase separate from whatever increases we do for everybody else at the, when we make those decisions. So I, I would, I would favor continuing what you're currently doing, and, and I think that addresses it.
I completely agree. Just the first rationale, it says the Bureau of Labor shows on an average of 5% increase. Well, Social Security gets 2.5 next year. Just consider that when you put rationale down on a paper.
Anybody else?
I would just encourage you to tell them, if you're working, log it. We want to pay you for what you're doing. We want to pay them for what they're doing.
It's possible, but I know some of them are, love the job, this is okay. But this, if they are actually logging all their hours that they've worked, just so you're aware, it, it may add up to more than $150 a week.
Fine.
I think this is a scheduling thing because we, these jobs came to 24 hours a day. And you're saying you're on-call.
When enough logging 24 hours, it's going to pay.
So, so if it's a weekend event, I mean, you can, you can get, I think that it's just a scheduling thing is what I'm saying. So if they're going to be camping all weekend, then perhaps there might not be so much work mid-week. I mean, we're talking comp time here, which is perhaps more of a, an internal thing or a policy we've got to look at. But, well, I know you don't want to do comp time, but at the same time, I don't want to-
No, I just don't want to be a, be a department.
I don't want to see another time limit go out of control either. Because, you know, I, I mean, I, I think you've got to face it. I see your employees in, in my, you're shopping for groceries middle of the day, while I'm, you know, shopping for an event. Well, really? Is that?
Yeah. We trust them.
Right. Okay.
We trust them.
I assume that the administrator and the judge managed that, and I-
I think you're right, it's a management thing.
Are you getting the support from HR on this at all, or do you need more support from our HR?
I do, we have a discussion with Kathy and Richard, before, and that part we can handle.
Okay.
Okay, until we come back and forth, they'll log all their, all their hours. But they actually, they actually do the job, and they, they've started to, but I think they underestimate it. But I would encourage them to put down-
Legitimate hours. Yes, tell them to put down the hours of working.
I don't think anyone here doesn't want to see them paid for what they do. And so-
I think we had the consensus last time. Laura, there is, there is one more issue that wasn't in our budget request. One of our employees is, were doing 35 hours. And this was, and she was hired during my term, but this 35 hours as opposed to 37.5 is an agreement really between Joe Pobolo and the employee, because the employee had young children, and she asked there's childcare issues to, you know, to manage. But now that her children are older, I don't see why she should be, you know, working less hours with pay. So we're asking that that position, that all the, the four positions be at the same hours, the same hours per week, which is 37.5. And in terms, and Karen, crank, you know, the financial numbers issue?
I don't see any issue with that. We're trying to honor a request that it should all be at the same level. You would give, you would also eliminate one line in our, in our, our accounts. It should all be at the same level, have a different piece of it.
Yeah, I don't see why we wouldn't do that. Just make that adjustment.
And just so we're clear, if, if she goes from a seven-hour day to a seven and a half-hour day, that means her vacation pay goes from a seven-hour vacation to a seven and a half-hour vacation pay. So her, her incremental pool of vacation goes up as well.
Sure.
Did I say that correctly?
Yeah. Understood.
Well, I remember how there's some other things too.
Holidays were seven and a half hour holiday, not seven. So there is an impact.
Well, if, if we replaced her with another person, they would expect to work 30, 37 and a half hours. So this was something we, yeah, this was an accommodation.
So I'm not opposed to it. I guess my question is, is this, I mean, it should be based on the workload that's required of the department rather than this person's individual 35 or 37 and a half hour thing. I mean, if we're making a decision, say, you should look at us and say, there's enough workload here, we need the additional two and a half, it will reduce some-
Her counterpart, they have approximately the same number of things on their, under their watch, is 37.5. So she doesn't really do less work than her counterpart, and there's the same responsibilities. But, but she's, she's asked, her children are older, and I'm not sure how we could justify not having everyone of the same family run into some kind of lawsuit. I don't know.
Yeah.
No, I guess my, and I agree with you, my, my point is that should be the, the reason, the justification is that the workload is there, not.
Not because of her family.
Not because of her family or kids getting older, I mean, uh, boy, we have a whole, well, we were back in like a thousand people before, but children changing positions.
She's been buying in the extra hours for the thirty-five.
Okay, I mean, that, that's.
I just think if it's sweeter, I'll leave it at seventy-five, I'll just, and force them.
Understood, yes, yeah.
Everybody's heads nodding, I think.
Well, I, I would, I would look at it the other way, if she can do her job at thirty-five hours, let's form all of thirty-five hours.
Also, this position is also reimbursed by the state.
Fifty percent. Twenty-five, what?
Seventy-five.
It's gonna cost the county three hundred million dollars in lawsuits.
Okay.
Everybody ready to move on from that?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you just ask for clarification, implementation, um, one-one of twenty-five?
Yes.
For, for what?
Implementation.
Yeah, but you're just talking the thirty, thirty-five, thirty-seven.
Oh, that, that part, yeah, but the other is ongoing already, so.
Also, well.
Yeah, the.
Thanks, Judge.
The only change.
Thank you.
Another thing that will change is down at the bottom of your list there, where it says substance abuse coordinator thirty-five hour a week, uh, that will be eliminated because it'll just move up to the other.
Okay.
Which list are you talking about?
Substance abuse coordinator at the.
On this one right here, two up on the page.
Okay, Kathy, uh, before we move on to the capital improvement projects, you said?
Eliminated. We're going down to C now.
C. We haven't touched it. Oh, here's the fun one. Yeah.
Last minute, bombshells, I love it, thank you, sir.
Okay, little tiny numbers.
Okay. I like Richard, I tell you.
C.
Why would, why would he?
Ron, two C.
Why?
You asked last week what a, what a three percent wage increase would look like. Traditionally, her tradition has been, I'll go already, that you wait till you get through labor negotiations before you make a determination as it relates to.
Nine.
Wages are going to be for the non-union.
That's right.
You more or less come up with, of course, you already know that one of the unions has a contract there, next year that's going to be three percent, so you already know that one. You don't know the other ones, that's true. You also have a tradition of a need-to. So it doesn't make any difference what happens next year. If it comes up to four percent, everybody gets the extra one percent.
Yep.
You have that tradition, and I include us the one union that's already negotiating, you've got basic clauses for everybody. Make the decision now, make it later, it's, it's, it's no harm or no foul, if I understand your tradition, right? If a three percent wage increase is going to shoot, that you, Kathy, we shouldn't do some like, we've got.
I know, no.
Yeah, no, like a white move. Everything included is going to be eighty-four thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents for all the non-union people. And that counts everything that's the wage, like a match, and MERS. So if you wanted the information, there it is.
Wow, could you tell us what is under there?
What's that?
Sixty-six.
Oh, what's under the blue?
Six-six, seven-two-four.
If the budget impact of the wages is sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-one cents. The bike match is five thousand, one hundred and four dollars and forty-two cents. And the MERS match is twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents. I decided to turn that off.
Thank you.
So I would.
That one I can see, I guess.
I, I view this as good information as we make our other decisions, to know that something along this lines is coming. As we make our budget impacts, we know we're gonna have this, but I, personally, I mean, I wasn't here going to traditional, but I do know traditions happen for a reason, that, uh, we don't always know why that was, till we ignore them. So, uh, I'm, I'm of the position to say, thank you for giving us the information. Uh, it's good to have, because we, we know this now as part of our, in the back of our head of budget, but I don't, I personally, I don't see any reason to act on this right now.
It's up to you. But I think what we're gonna do, because we now know it, I think we ought to put it in the budget, so it's there, but until you make that final decision, that's up to you.
Uh, no.
This is now public information.
Is it the other way around?
No.
It is for me, I'm sorry, I'm gonna step in.
You can step in, then I can disagree.
If, if you adopt a, um, a budget line, I know it is, it built into your staffing levels. You approve your staffing levels, which half wages go into them. And they, they go, what's this, what's the term, parson parcel?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Part and parcel.
Part and parcel. So when you do approve your budget for twenty-twenty-five, you not only approve the budget, you approve the staffing levels, you approve your budget rules.
You understand.
And all of that to match.
Yep, you understand.
But I think what we have done in something similar, because we know it's out there, we could increase our contingency by roughly this amount, because we know something will be out there. Then we've not committed it to any one given thing, that would be a prudent measure, then it's still in the budget.
If you want to do that.
I would prefer you, if that's how you feel more comfortable for the next decision or whatever, I would feel more comfortable that way, that at least you're not gonna get hit with something that you didn't know.
Yeah.
And it's a good number to have, just like you said, information.
Do you, do you approve of that?
I do, because then you're approving staffing levels that match your budget. And your staffing levels are right to wage and values.
Anybody disagree with that? Got a plan. Now, before we go to the capital improvement plan, Kathy said she would give us a Reader's Digest cost on Sutton's Bay tip request one more time, and then I think we need to, uh, decide what we want to do with it.
I think because I couldn't hear, I lost something. What are you doing, are you instituting a three percent?
No.
No.
You're just holding it for information.
Information.
Just holding it.
Information only, but we will, we will make an adjustment to the contingency line to make sure that at least it's there, but the final decision of what it's gonna be is actually determined.
Right.
All I did was reiterate the information and your tradition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And to clarify that, if I lean into that number in contingency, I'm gonna back it by fund balance.
Correct, correct, correct.
About it, okay. Tip, okay. So the village Sutton's Bay is asking to capture portion of your revenue, which means less revenue you spend here. The improvements they would like to make, I understand, um, to municipal properties, which has no income on, or no outcome on your tax revenue, because those are tax exempt, they're not taxed. Does it improve the village? Yes. Does it make the amenities of the village nicer? Maybe that impacts taxable value on public pieces, a suspect, I don't know, I'm not necessarily. But at the same token, what they're asking you to do is forego some of your revenue that you would spend for your things here for a period of time, it can be any number of time. And it's on the increase in the taxable value, when they draw the line in the sand, they say, okay, as of this line, if it goes up this much, we're gonna take a little bit off the top. If it was yours, we're gonna keep it. If we have uncappings, same applies. Everything from the baseline up, they get to keep. So if there is a property that's been held generationally in the boundary of the DDA, and it gets sold and then uncaps, and I can speak from some knowledge of Sutton's Bay, it could be on the tax roll at three hundred thousand, and it sells for five million. The taxable difference, they'll keep, and it won't come to you. That, I, that's an exaggeration from them to say, it's reality, not on this case, that's how it works. So they do represent an average, which Richard explained, three percent or whatnot. There's variables, I think that was disclosed to you as well, but things you don't know, which is new builds and uncappings, you can't predict it. And you can't really predict inflation either, but you can get kind of ballpark. So it's, all, all it boils down to is they keep some of your revenue that you would have to spend for a period of X number of years, so. That's about all I can say.
And they keep it on all of the properties within the DDA?
Within the boundary of the DDA.
The DDA only, and the money could only be used, I understand, I've been working the DDA tip since nineteen ninety-one. And the D, and that money could only be spent on public improvements. Just a DDA tip, it's not like a brownfield tip. DDA tip, that money could only go back into public improvements, it'd be sidewalks, it could be repair of bridges, it could be adding bathrooms, which are public bathrooms. It could only be for public projects, you cannot use it to reimburse the developer or whatever, or any part of, hey, I want to put in a, a, uh, a portable unit, you know, a new reimbursement for college. That's a private investment, DDA tip will not do that. Brownfield tips can, and they could apply for that, but that's another whole scenario that, that tip makes place. Now, I'm not, I'm not gonna, my bias is, I'm an advocate, but I come from a different world, and so I'm not gonna push one over the other. The only thing I can advise you, that if you choose to do this, it's fine, but I would put a cap of how much you're willing to surrender over time. And they said they could do that, I didn't realize you could, but if that's the only, and they're saying you should do it or you shouldn't do it. All I'm saying is, if they're willing to say, until you capture packs, then you can stop, if they can capture it in three years, then they're done. That's it, or, no, there's no other way. Uh, but I, I would concur, I wouldn't let it totally run for the full five years, and then all of a sudden, instead of, you know, having a hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars that they've captured, they've captured two hundred thousand. Are they gonna reimburse anything over and above? I don't know, those are things that you would, you'd have to work out, so. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
So that's up to your problem. And I will, I will share my prejudice as it relates to tips.
Does the treasurer have any comment on the Sutton's Bay tip request?
Um, I think I go Catholic situation, which, uh, Richard's, it's for public purpose, so would you decrease it or?
Property owners don't pay the taxes, it's just where.
That's correct.
But, but the twenty-seven and the twenty-nine thousand, and the thirty-two and thirty-five, that was their max, right? Isn't that what they were saying?
No.
No, that wasn't.
What they are doing there is projecting what would happen if all that happens from the base only goes up by the rate of inflation or five percent, whichever is less.
So we could, so we could set something lower, I mean, we could make a limitation on that.
Well, they said it here that they would be willing to consider that. I'm just saying, that's what they said, I didn't realize that could happen, of course, you've never worried before. My experience is, we never thought about it, because there was always gonna be another project down the road that needed to be done. They're asking you for, again, if I heard him right, they're asking you specific for here. Now, the other part of this, if you've done it once, you may have to be open to have to do it again, or you may have to be open to do it to other units of government that may want to come in and help with that. But once again, it's a very specific tip. And I can only, places that I could see that could accomplish that could be Northport, if they wanted to create a DDA, you have to create a DDA, or. Empire, I think they're the other one that's organized.
Incorporated.
Incorporated.
Empire.
Village, yes.
They don't have three in the county, so those are the only three places that I could think of that you can do that. I don't even know if a township can do that, create a DDA.
We, we could continue to talk about it, but I saw three strong no's, uh, and no strong yes. I, I, it looks to me like it's dead.
Okay, that's fine.
Right, I mean, anybody?
Yeah, I, I can't support, I mean, and the other thing I would, yeah, I just, that's easy, let's just stop there for me.
I wish it was addressing affordable housing or something, then I could definitely be on.
Yeah, I agree.
Be on board, but for a bridge, yeah, just.
I think I'm a strong no on that.
I don't see, I, I see it as very valuable in developing housing, but this one is pretty nebulous, so.
Thank you.
Well, now the big one, and we got an hour and five minutes to do it.
Well, let's go a little faster, because I'm in payroll too, so.
Yeah.
Um, I think we narrowed the big list down, we know what we want to tackle, um, and we built it into the budget that's in front of you. If you go back to your seven-page, the green space that start with revenues.
Seven.
Okay, so where are we?
Seven.
Is this the stuff we got today?
Yep.
One of seven, okay.
Revenues in the far left column.
Okay.
By putting into the general fund budget a contingency for the cooling tower, the air handler, the console project, the sheriff's cameras, they're in here. We know we're gonna get those whether he gets two percent money or not, and hopefully the console project as well. Um, but they're in here. The lean on the fed, or the fund balance right now without your wage increases, and remember what we just discussed, the number that you have for information only encompasses about twenty-five, twenty percent of our employees. We're leaning into fund balance, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars balance.
That doesn't include the eighty-six that we just, did I miss that?
No, no.
So you're actually at eight, eight, uh, eight twenty-some, right?
And that's for about twenty percent of your employees. Now, on that schedule that we did look at, that we gave you the informational number, I did not incorporate the administrator, because we don't know really what that person's gonna be paid increase-wise, so that's just kind of, it's another number, it's not huge, I'm sure, but you need to keep that in mind. And when this document was put in place, I had not gotten a notification yet from the Supreme Court for the probate judge's salary. So that one also has an increase, but it's, um, I think it's one eighty-five now. So there's just a small increase there that's not, it's a thousand dollar figure, but I'm gonna round it up, let's say a hundred thousand, stick a hundred thousand onto the seven forty, so you're at eight forty.
So wait a minute, so you included the cooling tower there.
It's in here.
But we're taking that out of DTR, so that's not out of our current revenue.
Fund balance for that, but for everything that is funded by a transfer from the DTR, it grew up to eight hundred and forty thousand, if you go with that three percent recognition in your head, you know, what you're thinking about. For twenty percent of your employees, you still have a bunch of premium contracts that have to be negotiated, that are not a part of this.
Okay, wait a minute, I thought you said this included the cooling tower.
It does.
It does where the money's coming from.
Right.
Incorporated in here, and it's the flow money coming in from.
DTR.
DTR, it's coming in, so your fund balance is not being, that six hundred thousand dollars needed is not showing up, it has to use your fund balance, it's coming from another source. The expense shows up, but not, you know, it's not affecting the general fund balance.
Right.
Another way of saying that is absent the DTR transfer, that fund balance would have to be one point three-five million instead of seven hundred and forty.
And if you go to each seven of your revenues, you're gonna see the revenue of transferring DTRs.
Yes, six hundred thousand, line one.
Here's your roster, right there.
Okay.
So when it's in there, it's just not on the seven hundred and forty thousand, it's, you know, if you want to get seven of the DTR, that's where that money is. So on your priorities list, we're not pushing anything forward into twenty-five undecided, like we did a year ago. When I sat there in front of you and we wanted to get an approved operational budget, we didn't have time to tackle capital, we pushed it into twenty-four. And so the beginning of twenty-four, you were catching out capital, and it trickled all the way to the wall with the facade and the, um, bridge. And all of that, that should have been handled in twenty-three, but we couldn't get to it, so it trickled into twenty-four. We're saying your list is handled, your priorities are handled, nothing is going to be undecided going into twenty-five. Just what you don't know is who's gonna do the project and how much it costs, but we've got some money earmarked, so that you know that you see a bottom-line figure here.
But everything that. But everything that I would say from the list that we have, if we look back, everything that you have out there that needed to be looked at and thought about last year is now incorporated.
And this year, looking forward.
Nothing major. Anything that, anything further has not been touched. That'll be next year.
Or at our max.
You've got the critical items that need to be looked at.
And there's no room to add anything more. Is that what you're saying?
What would be added if it wasn't your priority list already?
Well, other than the unknowns we have, you know, union contracts being negotiated, there's several unknowns that we know, we know they're not going to be zero or less. That much you can be assured of, and, you know, so you have, I'm just going to, if you look at like from 2021, and we're rolling along at about a 6% increase year over year, which I don't believe is sustainable for this county. I mean, sooner or later, people are going to stop buying stuff here. Everyone will bought what they need, and you're going to have to come up with some other ways, so. It's just.
And next year's list, we're going to have the next board who will look totally different with their priorities, and they'll be sitting just like you are.
Yeah.
Yeah. It is what, it is a budget. It can be changed. It can be amended. It looks like it will be during, during the year. Things will come up that don't solve. That's what you work through, so.
So we don't need to do anything more on that? Everybody comfortable with it?
Yep.
Based upon what comes out next year, as it goes through that process, like the commission may decide to move it forward or not move it forward, I just say it comes up to be more than 400 and some odd thousand, and it comes up to be 700,000. I say, maybe we've got to put that off until next year. I don't know. Those are decisions that the next body will have to make, but at least the information will be there, and you've identified it as a need that needs to be strongly considered. Our job is to continue Melinda's statement, keep it moving forward.
And I think the next board is going to have to deal with the issue that Melinda brought up last, last meeting about carpet and upkeep of the facility.
And I think those are things that are, when we get down to Smithman's, I've got to talk about, but those are things that are on the list that need to be talked about. And when we're doing one item, maybe we could attach it on to another item to say, okay, what if, as an alternative bid, you say, why you're here, what if? Those are decisions others can make, so.
Yes.
You know, just, just an FYI, yesterday at NMCA, yeah, just one A. I have an NMCA A, and just an A. Nate Alger shared about their hacking experience, and he strongly suggested an insurance, I forget what he called it. I've got my notes, and I didn't bring them.
Iber.
Basically backend insurance. He said it's expensive, but well worth it. And so that's probably, he strongly suggests the county have that.
Especially a cap on those two, though. To me, it's expensive and they don't pay more than.
Right.
William, I would be more than, if you can find that out, I'd be more than happy, because I'm sure they're using the same criteria we are, so that at least we can have that in our consideration as we do our policy coming up sometime in the next couple of months.
It was also shared that if you, if we get hacked, we have to call, and then, or am I, yeah, within 15 minutes.
Right.
That has to be the first call.
First call, everything else is a second.
Or they won't cover you.
Okay, Kathy, next steps.
Well, the calendar that we adopted, well, that we suggested for these meetings, we've come to the close of what we thought would be budgetless tax. So we've got a good indication from you as to a proposed budget. You've been, you've built in a contingency for some big ticket items. You have a mental contingency, well, we'll put in the, we'll round it up a little bit for potential 3% on the non-union, just to have it there. We, if we stick to the schedule, there would be a proposed budget prepared for November 1st to be put in your hands, and then it would be available for the public to view November 4th. And we would head toward November 12th for the executive board to recommend adoption. Then it would go to November 19th for the public hearings, and you can change things right up until the 11th. And you could be able to put from the public, and if you sold the deal mode to adopt a budget, that's when you could do it. There's not a saying you have to. But we do have to stick to, you know, putting it in public's hands for a period of time. You know, we're fine with public, you know, we do have to stick to that.
Why the difference between the first and the fourth? We get it on the first.
The first is a Friday, I think. And the fourth is Monday. You could have it in your hands. I mean, you might not have it in your hands on the Friday 1st. It might be Monday. I mean, we just put it in a calendar. And it does also hinge on the publication. Notice has to be in the enterprise if this is what path you want to take, because there has to be a notification by MCL.
You know, we're working out that time limit here a little bit. I'll get with the board and you know. And just remember, ma'am?
Yes.
What you'll also present to the board is the revised appropriations act, because when you adopt the appropriations act after the public hearing, that is the document that will adopt your budget rules, your budget, your staffing levels and everything, and that will be reflected in your current, you know, raise also. That is all adopted with the public. It wasn't the appropriations act that's required in order to adopt your budget. They'll, they can provide that to you at the November 1st or any time you want.
What did we do?
Which is a draft in your book. Yeah. That's what adopts all of the staff.
Procedure.
The appropriations.
Kathy, do you need us to turn in our budget books for updating?
It's up to you. Executive meeting on the 12th is kind of, it's difficult to give you the pages on the day you're reviewing. You get to propose, so if you could bring them in, in this meeting room.
If you like, we'll mail them to you.
I got mine right with me.
We can mail them to you on Friday.
Well, typically what happens, because I know you love the tradition around here, if you just leave them on the table in this room, your names are on the back, and we don't take your notes out. We don't do anything except insert pages, and they're a different color.
Should I insert these or just leave these for the insertion?
You can leave them this end of the day, because you're going to change again, because you just made the changes today. We will write these for your votes, and we are calling and ready to pick them up.
Okay.
That's wonderful.
Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Richard. I think we're nearing where we need to be. I think we've finished our agenda. It's now time for public comment, if anybody has public comment. Jill, you have public comment for us?
Liar.
Going quick. Going once, going gone.
I think, I think Bill is here to make public comment.
No, his stuff's right there. Stuff is right there, but we don't yet do that, do we? Okay.
Now, no way for public comment?
Nope.
Okay. Any, we'll start with commissioner comment with Richard, because you have some updates for us.
Couple of updates. First of all, we have a facilities director. We'll start on November the 20th, November the 12th, and his name is Patrick Roach. So he's interviewed. We ran him through the gauntlet more than, we've probably done others, but he had some brilliant input, and we're excited to have him on board. He knows he doesn't have to change the role overnight over time, so.
Can you tell me?
We're happy to have.
The name again?
Roach.
Did you say, did you?
Patrick Roach, R-O-A-C-H.
Where is he from?
He lives in Northport now. I don't know where he lives, but he does live in Northport. Career in the military, you know, where he worked, he had a, he had folks when he led the 21 people working on some things, so I think he has a good grasp of what's going to be, just like the rest of us, where I think he's going to go through the learning curve, like his heart is now. The future is that he'll be working with Jerry, you know, to get, you know, get all this stuff through his head, try to get it written down and everything like that. And so we have a transition plan that is taking place. Other thing is, is that a couple of weeks ago, we were notified that Safety Net, the firm that handles all of our, to go back, you know, behind the scenes safety stuff as it relates to the internet, has been sold to a company called Thrive out of the Boston area. This is the first company they've bought in Michigan. I immediately wanted to make sure all the Ts and As were dotted, turned this over to our attorneys, who are looking for to make sure if there's any Ts or As that need to be undertaken in front of this board, such as assignments of this contract to a limit that was, I think is one that's going to have to be addressed, so that may be coming to you. There's been no change in personnel. The same people are working for us or for Verden County that were there. Nothing has changed in that area. But we're just trying to make sure that all the Ts and the As, all the Ts from Boston has dotted, so our legal counsel is working on that, to make sure it's been debated. So the contract does tend to be one year, so there may be other changes coming down the road. Last but not least, a couple of weeks ago, our last meeting, we did approve the idea of moving forward with the purchasing of trees. We were hoping that the trees from DTE or to do that program, we were hoping that if we, everything fell into place at the right way, that we could do that yet in late October, early November. But other circumstances, as we kept, kept trying to move it forward, you know, and it wasn't anyone's part, it just all of us knew what we needed to do, so it should be a community event. It's going to be pushed off until spring. And that way, everybody, and I feel like we're putting 10 pounds of fertilizer in a five-pound bag, so we're just going to slow down, do it the right way. DTE and the, I'm sorry, you know, the firm, the folks that do this for.
Really?
Really, that have been doing it were probably much happier because of two individuals that would be guiding us. One, they have a pretty busy schedule, and I think the director of it is right now in Florida, trying to figure out what they're going to do down there. So it works out pretty good. So I just wanted to give you a quick update now, instead of waiting until November. So you'll get to meet Mr. Roach on the 12th.
Thank you. Good. Any other commissioner comments?
I lost my train of thought, because I had my hand up for commissioner comments. A couple of things with the budget. But one of them is some of these things are just going to roll. If they're in here, we haven't looked at them individually, so they're just going to roll as far as an expense goes. Like, non-mandated things are just in here, rolling, for number one. And I had one more point with the budget that I wanted to make that we ought to be looking at. And I can't think of what else now. Can you hold on when you start talking?
How's that? If you have any more questions or concerns, please just get them to us, and we'll respond to everybody in line, okay? So you don't have to wave and call.
Thank you.
You don't come back to me.
Well, it would, it would be something we should spend some time, some time, some time looking at. Even like the revenues, we've got some numbers punched in here for like the tower revenue, but we really haven't dug into that. Inmate revenue, some of those things, we just kind of glanced through them, but the other part of it. Can I report a lot?
Two out of three.
I'm sorry. Andrew came to me mapping, aerial mapping. He's been approached that the county has some aerial mapping being done in 2025. He didn't know it until just this week. And so apparently, it happens every five years. And the mapping fund does have money in it, and we've kind of looked at that budget, so anticipate him coming to you with a contract for aerial mapping. It's about a $30,000, a once every five years activity, but this fund has had money in it since 2020, I think, in anticipation, because Andrew's budget always has, and you're a mapping line item that goes unspent, just for it. So I just want to let you know, that did come up this week, and I neglected to say it.
Lot of money in it.
Any other commissioner comments? I would like to follow up on Melinda, if there are concerns about the budget, we have two weeks to get our concerns to Kathy and Richard, and so let's not just think we're done with it. If we have questions, let's get them answered.
It can change on your executive, too, if you work that again at executive in November.
Yep.
Motion to adjourn?